I think you'd better relate it to the correspondence, which is correspondence number, whatever, from Mr. Peachey, because otherwise it's... The Dog Park was deemed to be a complete, completed matter, and then a letter came from Mr. Peachey, who's here this evening with Mr. Weave and Mrs. Cuthbert. Nineteen, seven, seven point one nine, so opposed to it. So that's the history, and Mr. Peachey's here with other representatives opposing the Dog Park to be made permanent in the location adjacent to the water filtration plant.
Welcome.
Water sewage.
If you'll put that mic on, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Wayne Peachey, taxpayer of Town of Godridge. The letter I sent to the mayor states, if I may sit down, please. Dear Mayor Shufelt, council members, subject Godridge Dog Park. As taxpayer and longtime resident in close proximity to the Dog Park, note that we are strictly opposed to the possibility that the Dog Park in its current location may be approved as a permanent site. At meetings with Dog Park committee members, we felt our concerns and comments, suggestions fell on deaf ears and that we were not given due consideration before a decision in this matter is reached. We respectfully request that this issue be added as an agenda item at an open council meeting of the Town of Godriche Town Council. I received a reply to be at this meeting. A little bit of history. I had the first house in the subdivision Suncoast Drive. I took a lot of time picking that lot. I went to council members, I went to the developer, I went to the sewage plant, I toured the sewage plant to see if there was any odor. I was satisfied with the sewage plant. I do not mind the sewage plant in my backyard. I would sooner have it than a factory. The area around the sewage plant was deemed open space. There will never be anything put there. What about a park? It's a park wing. That's what we were told. There'll never be swings, there'll never be slides, it'll be an open area. We've had fathers and their family come out and play frisbee, no problem. We've had ball teams come out and play ball, no problem, because they leave. We've had hang gliders go off the cliff and fly back over, no problem. They came, they used it, and they left, leaving us an open area. My question to the developer about the sewage plant and the wind coming off the lake, we'll plant trees there for you, Wayne, and they did, which was no problem. Nice fir trees or pine trees, and they grew to the ground naturally. This year, someone came along and trimmed them up about five feet so that they could run a lawnmower underneath it. That ruined our privacy. Then, we asked, at the meeting, somebody comes along and puts up a temporary Dog Park out of nowhere. There's a snow fence there, that's a temporary Dog Park. Well, that's okay. It's temporary, because we all knew in that area that we were told nothing would be put there. It's temporary, it'll be leaving. Fine. I was even foolish enough to go over there and blow snow in the wintertime so they could get their cars in so they could use their Dog Park. I went through 2011 and 2012 Signal Star to see if there was any noticement. Yes, there was. They did put a notice in that there would be a meeting. That was right around the same time as we had the storm. Shortly after the storm, the week after the storm, I went on holidays for two weeks, never heard anything more about it. Jerry Weave, next door to me, he never saw anything in the paper about it. Larry Swick, next door to him, never saw anything about it. Doesn't matter, because it's only temporary, it won't be there. Now, all of a sudden, never hearing a thing, there's no room in town. We're going to make it permanent. And where do I hear that? Over 109, the beach. Godridge Dog Park's going to be permanent at the end of Warren Street. So I come out to the next meeting and find out, excuse me here while I shuffle my papers. Next meeting I was at, I said I didn't want it there. It was in residential area, and it's too close to our property. The first objection I hear brought up was from Mr. Shamley at the end of Warren Street about the gate being at the north end of the Dog Park and parking on the road and the snow build up on Sunset Drive. So what does the committee do? They move it south. Then the next I hear from Gary Klefford and Mr. Corrigan, that they can hear noise from it. So what do they do? They move it south, closer to me. I went out and measured everything, and that's another thing, all the meetings, there were never any measurements given. But from Gary's fence to his house, from the front, the gate where the north fence is right now, is 221 feet. The distance from the fence, the new proposed fence to my property is 158 feet. 158 feet to Jerry Weave's property, and 158 feet to anybody on the lower end of Suncoast. Then, they're talking about putting a hedge to cover up the Dog Park. It'll come out eight to 10 feet. That shortens it up again. Plus the parking, that shortens it up again. When we were in the subdivision developing it, we said, what about the road? Which was, at that time, and still is, I guess, known as First Road. Oh, no, we're going to realign Warren Street. So they spent the money, the town did, spent the money to realign Warren Street. That would have put it right through the Dog Park and away from the people's backyard. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to have a Dog Park. The meetings I went to, I objected, Jerry objected, Mr. Corrigan objected, and Gary Klefford objected. Well, that's all right, we're going to put a hedge around it. We'll put new stakes in and see what you think of that. Okay, they put new stakes in. I didn't realize that they were going back and saying, it's okay. I was waiting for the meeting to say, no, we do not want those stakes there. That's okay, we'll put a hedge there. Still don't want it. Every meeting we went to, we claimed we didn't want it. And what did they say? Nothing. Again, the last meeting, the memos from the last meeting, again, some people present, are present, are against the Dog Park in that area. Others support it in that area, and following input, the following action will be taken. Well, that was about the fence and the hedge. As far as we are concerned, we were never listened to. Every time we said we didn't want it, it went on deaf ears. I have a couple of letters from people that could not be here. Mainly, my wife and myself. If I can find them. You have to bear with me, I've been up since six o'clock Sunday morning, working.
Can't find them, I think you've made your case.
Okay, here I found them. Dear Mayor Shufelt, council members and attendees, I regret I am unable to attend, however, I do wish to voice my opinion. We are and always have been dog lovers, and in a town the size of Godridge with a population of 8,000 people, it's imperative there be a Dog Park in a suitable location for people to use. The Dog Park in its current location is by no means a suitable location. Sure, it's great for those who live close by and want to walk their dogs to the Dog Park, but I assume this is not the norm in other communities. If a Dog Park is so important to owners, they should be willing to drive as far as necessary to use it. We were the first house in the entire area, south of Sunset Drive and west of Eldon Street. We moved into our house in the late spring of 1975. When we first looked at the plan, we chose our particular lot on top of the bank mainly because the direct area directly behind us to the fenced area of the water treatment plant was designated open space. To me, open space means just that, it does not mean it would be cluttered up with a fence off area. We are in a designated residential area with the boundaries of the Town of Godridge, and the Town Dog Park is in current location, is located 160 feet from our back fence and the houses beside us on Sunset Drive, Suncoast Drive. This represents about two town-sized lots, 160 feet. We have had Dobermans for over 20 years. I won't go into the history of the Doberman, but suffice to say, and I think many of you appreciate the fact that they were originally bred as guard dogs. Instinct cannot be bred out, and consequently, they are always on guard. Watch out the windows, and when outside, patrolling our fence line. If they detect anything they perceive as an intruder, they bark. This isn't particularly unusual, as many dogs, no matter what they breed, will do the same depending on the situation. With the amount of people in the traffic area now behind us, it is unfair that we sometimes find it necessary to use bark collars on our dogs so we don't get noise complaints. Further, even if with the designated Dog Park, many, many people do not use it and will drive south beyond the area of the Dog Park, directly behind our fence, and let the dogs out and allow them to run off-leash. This goes on all the time throughout the day. We choose not to use the Dog Park simply because we have no idea of each dog's temperament or if they ever have required vaccinations to prevent the spread of infections. As longtime taxpayers, we demand that our concerns be given due consideration. Up to now, it appears our concerns and objectives have conveniently been swept under the rug. I cannot believe there are no other options for a suitable Dog Park located in Godridge or outside the boundaries of the Town of Godridge. I have one here from Gary Klefford, who is at work and could not make it. Dear Council, it has been brought to my attention that there are people in the area who feel the Dog Park location is still in the wrong location. Personally, I have suggested this from the start, although, as mentioned, dog owners should have a park. But because no other location was found, council members suggested we just leave at the end of Warren. As opposition and the taxpayers, this still does not make it right. We feel it was pushed forward, and some council members said there were no issues of importance. I would still recommend that council still look to find an alternate location. Gary Klefford, Gary and Teresa Klefford. Bob Corrigan, comments pertaining to the establishment of the proposed Dog Park. The establishment of the temporary Dog Park was, to the best of our knowledge, never brought to the attention of the homeowners surrounding the proposed location in the beginning. The park just seems to appear. There should have been more public input sought prior to anything temporary or otherwise being established. Several years ago, the town made a decision to realign the proposed Warren Street extension between Sunset Drive and South Cove subdivision, so that it would perfectly align with the Warren Street and Sunset Drive intersection. As such time when the extension was constructed, this to us, and we would think everyone else, was a good council decision made at the time. So why now would council decide to set a Dog Park on top of this new road alignment and reestablish the Warren Extension back in its original location as we understand it when the extension goes through? This would create three T intersections, all within a couple of hundred feet of one another. If the park goes through, there is now proposed, we believe it will have a situation whereby no one is happy. The residents on Suncoast Drive and Warren Street, and the dog owners, to an extent, as we believe they are not thrilled with moving the park further to the south in the hollow. Just because we are told there are no available good locations, putting it in an available bad location is not the right answer either. And my last one, sorry for taking up so much time. I apologize for my non-attendance, but my work commitment out of town unfortunately kept me from attending, so I have asked that my comments be read. I've heard that the person, the reason the Dog Park is where it is, is because there is no other place to put an off-leash Dog Park. Because we can't find the right place doesn't mean you should put it in the wrong place. In my respectful opinion, this is so the wrong place on so many levels. My greatest concern about the present location is the safety of the residents, especially children living and playing in the residential area. You have a children's playground in the vicinity. You put equipment there to invite children to come and play, then you put an off-leash Dog Park. The two do not mix. Unfortunately, we have a lot of irresponsible dog owners in our community. The area around the water treatment plant was already an area which owners believe they can take their dogs and they don't require them to be off-leash. Now you place an off-leash Dog Park with further enhanced the area to be designated as an off-leash park. I've encountered many owners of their dogs running loose and seem to believe that it is their right to do so. When I suggest that they are off-leash, when I suggest that the off-leash park area is inside the fence, they have choice words for me. I am much attuned to whether dogs are leashed due to the fact that my dog was attached, attacked by a dog off their leash. Many owners pull into the parking lot, open the door, or hatch, and out jumps their dogs, already off-leash. If this is what they are going to do, this park needs to be in an area that no other residents are using. At our last meeting, Councilor Hanson suggested I call the bylaw officer when I call, when I see a dog off-leash. I don't believe Mr. Trick would appreciate me having him on speed dial and calling him with all the dogs running loose every day. I also suppose, until he was in the immediate area, that he would arrive from Wingham before they were gone. If the accident was going to happen, and I am betting it eventually will, it will be too late. We've heard much about properties being landlocked and unacceptable. I respectfully suggest a harder look has not been given to these locations. If the property is landlocked, nothing else can be erected. There are right-of-way's for entry to the property, and your Dog Park can be erected there where away from residential areas. Other concerns for the property values in this area? I would suggest property values are in danger, given not everyone would purchase property with a Dog Park in their backyard. This property is zoned open space with nothing to be erected but a public park. Surely, you can't classify a Dog Park a public park. Again, Councilor Hanson suggests she hadn't agreed with anything not being erected. We are all aware that zoning needs to be changed through proper channels. You now know the issues with this area if you didn't before. It is now time to do due diligence and correct the matter. Move the Dog Park. If a lawsuit is launched due to an unfortunate incident, that will, what will your defense be? First, you put a Dog Park in a residential area, and secondly, you were aware of the problem and did nothing to correct the problem. I have grave concerns for the rest of the municipality. If a sidewalk is full of ice, do you do something before someone gets hurt? Or do you leave it because a group of people want to skate on it? From Debbie McGilbury. As far as the real estate value, I've checked with realtors, all the ones in town, I don't know. We've never had that situation. If you have somebody that likes dogs, maybe we will buy your house because it's near a Dog Park. If we find people that don't like dogs, you'll never sell your house.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well presented, I have to say, and I guess it's up to council. What's your wish? Councilor Hanson?
Just, thank you, Mr. Peachey, but just to reiterate the process, I did agree to chair a series of meetings about the Dog Park. I worked closely with Martin, head of parks, and with Chip, head of works, and with the CAO, and there really was, truly, an extensive look at a number of properties. And that was, that's what we did first, and it took a number of months, and we met a number of times. There's no doubt that sharing such a meeting is probably a foolish woman's undertaking, because the likelihood that you're going to satisfy everyone is an absolute impossibility. Because on the one hand, there were dog owners who desperately wanted that park and wanted it there, and on the other hand, there were neighbors that did not. So the fact that there is so many, there are people unhappy is not a surprise, because if the decision had gone the other way, there would have been a different set of people sitting in that chair complaining the Dog Park wasn't there. So it really worked very hard to find land, and that wasn't possible, than what was attempted, and I think that's probably the point at which you entered the meetings. And what was being attempted at that point was to work collaboratively. And that was my wish, my stated interest, my, I had asked both the property owners and the dog owners to work together, that could we not find a compromise place? And that we thought if we had the location in terms of north-south, the appropriate gates, and made it more attractive, I think one of the things that currently makes it not improving property values, but probably diminishing property values, is the fact that it's truly ugly snow fencing. And so the goal was to eliminate the snow fencing, to put in permanent, more attractive, working with the neighbors and the dog owners to come up with a design. And that's the point at which you and some other people joined the committee, and unfortunately felt as if your concerns weren't being heard, but really, we had, in my estimation, had moved the committee to a place where we were working towards that compromise. So if you felt unheard, I apologize for that, but that's the point at which we were trying to get a compromise. It's my opinion that we have something that's relatively workable. This council actually approved it some time ago, and I understand it was actually approved a year before I entered council. And so it's probably, it would require the wisdom and solemn in which I fully admit I do not have, to satisfy everyone in this instance, but at this point, I would suggest to council that we proceed as we have planned, as they have approved previously, and no matter what we do, they're going to be unhappy people.
Councilor Morrison?
Where I have a problem with this, Your Worship, and I've attended a few of the Dog Park meetings, and I think it would be agreed that there's been some rather heated discussions at time and some rather inappropriate behavior. In fact, I think I even made a comment one time, I'd like to sit down with the dogs instead. But when I take a look here and see that, you know, we're still not, we're still not close, we're not happy. I think I made the comment when this first came up, that I had difficulties with having a Dog Park in a residential area, and I wanted to see proof of where it does work, and I haven't been able to find any. There's no municipality that I can find that has a Dog Park in a residential area. They're all in areas that aren't used, industrial areas, or there's no housing close by, and it's for obvious reasons, it's reasons of what we have now, you know, before us. And when I see the number of residents that aren't happy, you know, with the location of that Dog Park, I'm wondering if perhaps we should table this and go back and see if we cannot come up with another, with another spot. I mean, I know we looked and looked hard, but perhaps we didn't look hard enough, because I'm just not happy making a decision here tonight, making that a permanent one. So I would make that a motion that we table, and we go back to the, back to the board.
Back to the committee? Is that what you said?
I would say back to the committee, yeah.
Well, is there anybody here wanting to segment? It's not a motion.
It's very obvious that there's strong objections. I never went to any of the meetings. I did suggest a site at the end of Parsons Court. I don't know whether it was discussed or not at the meetings.
That site was discussed, and there were a number of concerns on both sides. Certainly, in a community where we have very limited industrial land, deemed inappropriate to take land to, that's A, not yet developed, and B, is some of our best potential. And secondly, the location at the moment was not attractive to the dog owners.
No, I was quite aware of that when I suggested it. And it is treed and needs some work, but I don't think it would be taking too much land out of, out of operations. It would cost something to bring it up to.
Your Worship.
Deputy Mayor.
I will second his motion, and to have a look at, see if there is another opportunity, just another kick at the cat, to see if we can, pardon the...
Dealing with cats.
Yeah, no, no, no. To see if there is another spot out there that can fit and make it happen.
Do you have a motion by Councilor Morrison to table this and take another look? Seconded by the deputy mayor?
You have to be more, there are a whole group of people that probably don't know this is, this is a letter written to council. I didn't notify the other people that think that the Dog Park's going to be there. Maybe you should be, and that the other people be notified that you're putting on hold. What are you doing with the existing? I mean, obviously, the talk is to eliminate it. Are you going to be more definitive in your motion? So, because there's some other people that think it's going there. We could call them and tell them that they attend another meeting. I strongly encourage all council members to sit in the crowd and do it, because there has been an exerted effort. We've even approached industry to say, can we put this next door? They have environmental concerns of something like being next door to them. We can have another look at it. We'll look at the parcel land the mayor's mentioned. I thought a prime one was the Knights of Columbus parking area, the whole, that wasn't acceptable to the Knights. We'll maybe try to meet with them one more time.
And that's my point. When you take a look at where the Dog Park's going, it appears that nobody wants a Dog Park in their neighborhood. And whether it be residential, whether it be commercial, whether it be industrial, we're having a problem with locating this Dog Park. And that's why I think that we've got to, we've got to be a little bit more concerned as to where this park's going, and I think we have to be, you know, investigate an area that is going to be good for everybody.
I think my point was if you could put in the motion that you confirm that the existing site is temporary, if that's what we're hearing, and that it be referred back to, because when I send them an email out to these people saying, that is only temporary, that is what I'm hearing from council.
And I would do that. Thank you, Mr. Weave. And I would do that, thank you, Mr. Peachey.
The council tabled the location of the dog park in the discussions, referred back to the, and confirmed the existing dog park remain temporary at this time.
So clarification, what is it that status quo remains temporary with snow fence?
We tabled the issue to have another look.
I would invite my fellow council persons to join me in those meetings.
I believe we have another speaker, which will take, it's out of order, but go ahead.
It's tabled, Your Worship.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Point of order, it's still tabled.
We haven't voted on it.
All those people that are for that dog park, they don't live there, they live somewhere else. That's what I'm trying to say, do they really have a vote, or not? Yeah, it is. You know, like, when something goes on in town...
All that here tonight.
Something goes on in town, something happens with the pollution plant, we all get letters saying, but we didn't this time, I don't know what happened there, but I still maintain it affects us right around that area, not the people that are, some live in somewhere else and don't have a place to run their dog, you know?
All in favor of tabling this? Against, carried. Okay, thank you, everybody.